...at 6:30 PM. May we have the call, the roll, please?
Brett Miller.
Here.
Stacy Cece.
Here.
Rich McNeil.
Here.
Sarah Jenna.
Here.
Mike Delavecchia.
Here.
Edwin Bónez.
Here.
Kurt Biati.
Here.
And Peter Brenn.
Kalina Graham and Rob and Dean are here for staff, and we want to welcome our new members, Stacy Kirk and Rich. We had a meeting canceled January... Because we didn't have a quorum. It's hard sometimes to get everybody together at the same time, and now we won't have that problem. Tonight, I guess, we'll seat Kirk and Rich as well, full members. Well, they are anyway, right? Ex officio. Stacy will sit as an alternate, participate in the discussions if she wishes, but she won't vote. And I've been told that Jewel Fox, who is also a new appointee, is she a full member or an alternate?
Full.
Full member, okay. She couldn't attend tonight, so it sounds like we better get a training going. Pardon me?
Let Brett sit.
Oh, Brett's still an alternate?
Yes.
Brett, you're still an alternate. Brett, you're a full member tonight, okay? Over there, in the south of the table. Okay, minutes. Any discussion on the minutes, or shall we accept them as submitted? Sensing no objection, then they are accepted as...well, let's have a motion to accept. I know, Dean, I've been told we don't need one, but...does anyone want to make a motion to accept the minutes?
Make a motion to accept last month's minutes.
The minutes from...a motion by Mr. Bónez, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Sarah Jenna, any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed, and then here you go. All right, that minutes were accepted. And now we skip all the way down to 9.1, if I am not mistaken. We have before us this evening, ladies and gentlemen, an amendment to the permitted use table and dimensional requirements table. I should ask how many people in the room know what those two things are, but that will be adequately explained by either Dean or Rob.
So, the primary change in the use table is we have added the line for the short-term lodging, indicating where it's permitted and where it is...could be obtained by special exception or where it is not permitted. And in the dimensional table chart, we are...we had a couple of typos from the last time, but we're also changing the front setback, side setback, and rear setback, and minimum green space required for the UC zone, and a couple of the notes that go along with that. And as you recall, in the previous one, we had an average of the two lots going in either direction, and while that seemed like a good idea seven or eight months ago, it has turned out to be not a good idea. It causes more problems than we anticipated, so we're going to go to a hard number to...for that zone. So, that's basically the changes.
So, I have a question for you before we get to the questions from the members. What are the current minimum setbacks in the UC zone? I thought there was...it was zero for side setbacks. Are we increasing it to five?
We are increasing it...
Like, I thought that in the urban area, the developed area, that there really was no side setback. You could have building to building.
It was just based on averages previously, so it was an average for the front side and rear setbacks, which was really what was causing the problem, because we'd have a lot that was fully developed next to a lot that might not have been developed at all, or a lot that was mostly parking lot that had a higher setback previously. So, when a developer was coming in to do a larger project, the average was working against them as opposed to in favor of them, so it was creating a larger setback than what we would have required in other districts.
How far up Union did we go with UC Zone?
All the way.
All the way.
All the way to?
McIntyre Circle, to use the colloquial term.
Are you calling me colloquial?
No, I'm calling the term colloquial.
I still call Irwin's the Grand Union, so just give me a break.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff about these dimensional...and these are the short-term lodging as the new...that's as a result of the Airbnb...what's the word for that? Ruh-ha-ha?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we created a new ordinance for short-term lodging.
Yep.
And with that, we need to define where...the ordinance defined where it's permitted, but the chart is intended to be an easy reference as opposed to someone having to read the actual text.
Okay. And will this result in any changes to the actual zoning map? Probably not. That's already been done with the UC Zone.
Does not.
Okay. I guess my final question is, are there any stakeholders that you've talked with about this? Landlords, developers, anything? I mean, have you gotten any impact from that? Any feedback?
Not in relationship to the chart, but in relationship to the ordinance, discussions are ongoing with different homeowners associations and also some commercial enterprises that are in or could potentially be in the short-term rental business.
Gotcha. So, that's still actually working itself out, and the city council is doing that for this part?
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's under control, I'm sure. All right.
Don't look at me when you say that.
Are there any...are there any questions for staff? I think we asked that.
Yeah. I apologize for getting here a little late. I came in and you were speaking about the reasons for this is that it became unmanageable. Could you help me out with that?
Sure. When we changed the dimensional table last year, in the middle of last year, to go along with the new urban commercial zone, we introduced the concept of, instead of some hard setback numbers, we introduced the concept of some averages, using the averages of adjacent properties. The idea behind that was, if you're in the downtown area, if you're on Main Street, and you're in a building that's adjacent to another property, for all intents and purposes, there are no setbacks on any buildings in the downtown.
That's true.
And so, our thought was, we don't want to impose requirements for setbacks. And as you go out of the downtown, immediate downtown area, you know, this...things become a little more looser, and we did not want to impose greater setbacks on new developments that would be greater than existing properties. So, the idea of the averages, you know, to try to take into account what's existing, and unfortunately, or fortunately, depending upon how you want to look at it, the first two or three applications that come in, we've got problems, because as Rob explained, you either got an empty lot next door, or a lot that has very big setbacks, which is unusual, but it happens, and that just throws the averages off and makes them go in the direction we didn't want them to go. So, we're going to go back to a hard number, and as small as we can comfortably go.
But would there be the ability, if we go to a hard number, to permit a zero setback for a fill-in?
Yes. Yes, and an existing property is, you know, is grandfathered anyway, so...
Right. I'm not talking about, like, a building burns down, can they rebuild? You know, touching their neighbors again, the answer would be, well, yeah, that's grandfathered. But I'm thinking, like, what was Rob saying, there are gaps in the teeth, so to speak, there are downtown.
Yep.
Like, the parking area that's behind the congressional church, that was all buildings that were taken down. What if someday, after we build our new multi-story, state-of-the-art parking garage, that's no longer needed, and they decide that they want to develop it? Then what? You're not using an average, it would be a hard number?
It would be subject to these new numbers here.
Right.
Which are five feet, which is very, very minimal.
Can I finish?
When I get a chance, can I finish with my...
Sure.
Oh, I'm sorry, David.
That's all right. I get interrupted all the time. I live with it. So, this is still going to be subject to what I'll call our user-friendly zoning requirements. They can come in and say...
Yes, it is. Under performance zoning, if they meet the requirements, performance zoning, one of the reliefs that the planning board can grant under performance zoning is different setbacks, in which case, and thank you, and that goes to the chairman's question as well.
Right.
The planning board could grant zero, or one, or two feet, or whatever we feel is appropriate.
And that will be a planning board decision?
Correct.
We're not looking for some kind of...
Not zoning board, or anybody, it would be a planning board decision, yes.
That stays within the province of the planning board.
Yep, using the performance zoning process as outlined.
Okay. And you're recommending these changes?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, David. Are there any other questions for staff? All right, there being none, I'm going to open the public hearing at 6:41 PM. Is there anyone here that would like to be heard regarding the amendments to the dimensional requirements table and the...well, there's two dimensional requirement tables, I guess, and the permitted uses table? Anyone? All right, well, sensing none, I will close the public hearing at 6:42. What is the pleasure of the board?
And just a reminder, the board, if you vote to recommend this, you'll be voting to recommend approval to the city council. If the city council needs to vote on this...
It has, yeah, because it's an ordinance, basically. We're amending an ordinance. All right, so who would like to make the motion and keep us moving along here?
Okay. I move that we recommend to the city council that the changes to the table of dimensional requirements and the table of uses, permitted uses, be adopted by the board and sent on to the city council for its consideration.
Would someone care to second the councilors?
I'll second that.
We have a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Sensing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, on to 9-2. 1330 Union Avenue, proposal to construct 32 condominium units, garages, open parking, and other appurtenances. The note here says that, I guess this was the last meeting, that the sidewalk waiver was denied, and it was continued from February 4th. It might have actually been on the January. The listing got bumped, anyway. So, the first item that we need to deal with is acceptance. Does the staff recommend that the application is complete and ready for acceptance?
It is complete enough for recommendation for acceptance. We're still working a couple of issues, and as our recommendation is, if you do accept this tonight to do the public hearing, or open the public hearing, and then continue the public hearing to the April meeting.
Because there will be changes.
There are a couple of minor changes in the works, yes.
Okay. All right, that's fair. So, kind of a conditional acceptance, or do you want to just continue the acceptance to the next meeting?
No, I would prefer you to accept.
Well, all right. Well, that's a strong staff recommendation.
So, what should we do? Accept it as incomplete? No, I'm only kidding.
David, we'd never make such a motion. Sarah might. You might make a motion to accept.
Okay. Make a motion to accept application PL 2020-0003 SP for 1330 Union Ave.
Excellent. Is there a second for Ms. Jenna's motion?
I will second that.
It is seconded by the vice chair. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yes.
Of course.
By accepting this, are we saying that it's okay to put 32 units on that piece of property?
No.
Or just that the application is complete?
It's the first step in the legislative process, basically. And there will be a public hearing tonight, which will then be continued until the final plan is before us.
Very good. So, we'll have two public hearings?
There'll be two public hearings, there'll be two opportunities.
Open the public hearing, continue everything.
Two press cycles, everything, so...
Okay. Two notice.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, and we need to vote on it, right? All those in favor signify by raising their hand. And one abstention, okay. All right.
So, open the public hearing?
Oh, yes, okay. So, putting on his glasses. At 6:46 PM, we're opening the...
The applicant first, sorry. My...the applicant first.
Come on down.
We are going to invite the applicant first at 6:46. Oh, it's you again. Good evening, Mr. Oki.
Good evening, John Oki, with Oki Consulting. I'm here on behalf of DHB Homes this evening on the Barton's project, which we call Lakeside at Pogus Bay.
Excuse me, it's very difficult to hear. Is there any bonding that you can add to that?
Kalina.
Just get closer.
Yeah, we all have to get a little closer to the microphone, and then it gets louder, so...
This project actually started last summer for me. I worked with the...with my client. We went...we met with the city several times to kind of explore the possibility of developing this parcel. We had a bunch of concept meetings with city staff. We've met with the fire department. We did a lot of kind of upfront things before we jumped into working on the project. This one...this project is in the performance zone. We aren't...we...basically, the only item that we're asking for any relief on is the number of units total, which ends up being the 32. We met all...we're meeting all the setbacks. It's a pretty decent-sized parcel. Everything that we're proposing to do fits pretty well on the site. We were before you guys last fall, after we kind of put together our concepts of what we wanted to do, we came to the planning board looking for input from the planning board on the direction we were going with it. One thing that actually came from that meeting is, we added...we were showing garages, and we were showing outdoor parking, but what we did is we doubled the garages to full...two-car garages for each unit, and we also added guest parking spaces outside in addition to their one space. So, each unit actually has two spaces in a garage and one outdoor space, and there's guest parking on top of that also.
How much additional guest parking?
What's that?
How much additional guest parking?
There...I believe there's probably like 10 extra spaces or so. If you look on the entranceway in, that whole...along the northerly edge, that whole section is guest parking, and then in front of the units, there's actually a couple extra spaces along...sprinkled in along the front of the units. And then each bay of the garages is a two-car bay, so we increased the number of, you know, increased the number of available parking spaces for residents and guests by quite a bit.
All 32 units are going to have a two-bay parking garage?
Each one has a two-bay parking garage.
With doors? And then each one will have...
And each one also has an outdoor space.
An outdoor space.
So, each one has three spaces.
Okay.
So, they automatically have a little bit of guest space for themselves and some additional on top of that.
The structure is...
And how many units would you have if you had to comply with current zoning?
I believe it was like 26 or something like that, if I remember right. It's...we're not asking for...we're not asking for a lot of units, no.
So, you're looking for an additional six units?
Yeah.
We can get the answer to that fairly. We don't need it tonight.
Okay.
So, the buildings closest to Union Ave, those are the garages, right?
That's correct.
And they have garage doors each unit, or are they going to be open?
They're enclosed garages. They're not...they're not...
Not like barn type, yeah. And can you show us what their facade would look like from Union Ave?
This is what you're looking at right here.
As close as we got, right?
Yeah, this is one of the...
Sort of a bird's eye view. What do those buildings look like from the lake?
The large...oh, the larger ones.
You got a view from the lake?
Yep.
The housing, yeah.
Okay.
Hold on here. That's the lakeside.
How close are they to the high watermark, roughly?
They're generally about like 56 to 60 feet away.
Okay.
We're definitely not in the...we have the shoreline application all put together.
Yeah.
We have not actually turned that in. I don't know if everyone's aware of what the shoreline fees are these days, but they're dramatic, so...
How many...are you looking to have a boat slip for every unit?
No, there will not be. There's not enough frontage.
It's not possible.
It's not possible.
Based on the number...
Yep.
They calculate it based on the...
Based on your frontage.
Frontage, yeah.
Yep. I believe we have six that are allowed, and what we're going to do is, maybe a couple of the people will have a designated spot by paying extra for it, and then a lot of the rest of it will be day docking, like, they'll be able to...
Won't have a ramp, right?
No. Nope.
So, you're going to submit that application after we've approved this?
Not necessarily after an approval. We need...we wanted to go through a public hearing and, you know, find out, talk to you guys with an actual application in front of you, find out what our issues are.
Well, we're going to table this to April's meeting.
Yep.
Right. So, you're going to wait to file that application until after April, or you're going to file that?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily.
Okay. I just want clarification on that.
Yep.
Even if we...
We're trying to get as much input as we can before we turn that in. It's dramatic.
Okay.
It's possible to get a conditional approval without the shoreline permits, right?
Yeah, we do that.
I mean, subject to further...
Yeah, we do that on a fairly regular basis, where you...the board would approve the application with the condition that they obtain all necessary state or federal permits.
Okay. There we got it. All right. Was there anything else you wanted to bring to our attention, sir?
Yeah. Some of the things that we've been going through, we did actually make the alteration of terrain application already. We're in the queue with the state of New Hampshire on that. One of the things I did discuss with them, one of the things we're using is it's a product by Contec called Jellyfish, and it...what it is, is it's basically mechanical...it's a mechanical treatment of water, so you don't necessarily have to do a detention pond and treatment swale. It actually is accepted by the state of New Hampshire for full treatment of stormwater before it goes into the lake. And because we're on the lake, the pre and post flows don't need to be balanced, but with the design we're doing of the site, we actually end up with less impervious surface than the current Barton Motel.
What's it called, Jellyfish? It's a proprietary thing?
By Contec, yes.
Yeah.
There's comparable products. If you look at...basically, it basically is like...it basically ends up fitting inside like a manhole structure.
Yeah.
And it's a series of filters, basically, that everything run...the stormwater runs through, and you have to...
Just gravity-fed?
Gravity-fed, yes. And this...they've worked with the state of New Hampshire over the course of several years, making sure their product was approved. And actually, after I made the application to the state of New Hampshire, I actually have an email from the state saying, they both agree that Ridge and our reviewer both agree that Jellyfish are acceptable BMP for fossil...phosphorus removal on the lakeside project because it's redevelopment. They're going to accept it as treatment, so...
And the good news is, it increases the green space.
Yes. We're actually increasing green space a little bit with this project.
So, you anticipate with this jellyfish filter that the impact to the lake is going to be zero or negligible? Is that right?
Yes. Yep. We've used them before on the lake in other projects also, so it's...this isn't something that is brand-new, that's never been done before. It's been...there's...they've turned in all field studies. They...the state of New Hampshire has approved this since, I think it's like 2013, they've been approving them here and there, so...
What's the existing system? Where does that...is that just a straight pipe discharge, or is it treated?
There's the...what exists today?
Stormwater.
There's nothing. It just goes right into the lake.
Just surface runoff?
Yes.
Oh.
Surface runoff, and surface runoff into the street, into the...either...part of it goes...part of it goes right out into the right way.
Right, exactly, yeah, that's right.
Yep, and the rest of it is...
Because the front is all paved, right?
Yep.
And under your plan, that area that's all paved will be lawn, right?
A lot of that is lawn, yes.
Lawn and plantings.
Yep.
Nice ornamental trees, please.
Yes, along the...this is just the architect's rendering, but it's going to be filled in pretty well from the front.
It looks nice.
Yep. And we actually are...if you go to one more page here, we are going to put the sidewalk in along the whole frontage.
Yes, you are.
No, the...I don't know if you know any of the history of that. The DPW didn't want the sidewalk, and they actually asked us to do the waiver, so it wasn't necessarily...it didn't matter to us one way or another, I guess.
Yeah.
But since you guys want the sidewalk, we added it in, so...
Yep, and there was a gentleman here at the last meeting from the cemetery. I don't know if he's here tonight. He's like, hi. Yep, there he is.
Alive.
Yep, alive, yes. You definitely... That's good. If you're in the cemetery business, you want to be on this side of the ground. The...what is it called? The mortuary, or the crypt?
It has a name, just a large granite building that remains are placed in.
Yeah, and it's not usable, you said, right?
Well, the upper part, there was an extension several years ago
Yep.
to allow for cremations to be permanently stored there.
But you can't access it from Union Ave anymore, or something?
When the city redeveloped Union Avenue several years ago, they changed the pitch and then put a post along there, and it doesn't allow the caskets to be moved in there any longer.
Well, if a sidewalk were to be extended...
Would you identify yourself, just so we...
Oh, yeah, he's going to probably be up, I'm sure.
I'm Warren Hutchins. I'm the...an officer of the Bayside Cemetery Association.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchins. I didn't mean to jump ahead, but I'm thinking ahead. So, the sidewalk is put in, it could be connected to the north, towards the boulevard, if some engineering was done in front of their crypt, and it might make their crypt usable again, if you think about it. Because all they have to do is change the grade and the drainage in through there. Not your problem, but at the last meeting, there was some discussion using the phrase that I hate, sidewalk to nowhere, you know? We have to build our infrastructure the way we build our infrastructure, and this is one of the ways to do it, and we appreciate it whenever the developer is able to help with that problem. All right, I'm done. Soapbox is...
No, that's fine. So, the other part of this application that is obviously the case is the existing Barton's project as it exists today gets demolished with this. Part of what we...part of what we had to do is go through a DHR review with the state of New Hampshire.
Yep.
That actually...they actually required us to do a historical study of the Barton's project, and we hired a historian to go basically interview Chris Barton, walk around through the...walk around through the units, all the buildings, take photos of everything. She had to prepare a report and turned it into the DHR people in Concord.
Yep.
And they did a review of that last week, I believe it was, and they said, well, it has...well, it has, you know, potential for being recognized. Basically, the buildings themselves are...
Just by their very age, right?
It's for posterity, basically. That...it's not...there's nothing that...there's nothing that needs to be physically saved, and they're preparing their report on that, so...
And there's no archaeological...
No. No, we did all that. Nope, we did the, we did all that, we did, uh, we did the NHB with the state of New Hampshire, which you have to do, we have a clean, we have a clean bill of health with that, uh, we did go in front of the Heritage Commission, um, last month, and we have a meeting coming up with them again on, on that, uh, with regard to the demo permit, so, we're working through that process too.
It sounds like you're, uh, being diligent here.
The bookstore is going too, right?
Yes, yep. Part of, part of what, uh, our, our archi, our historian said, it was, she went through and, uh, documented everything, and the bookstore has been, over, over the years, it's been basically gutted and renovated, and vinyl siding put on, and windows changed, and things like that, so even though the bookstore portion of it is really old, like, the thirties are, I believe, if, if I remember right, but, um, since all that stuff was changed, it's, it's no longer intact as, as a, like a physical structure.
Right. Right. That was probably the original motel, that first part.
Yeah, she, she has, it, she did a full report on everything of the, of the progression of how it all, how it all, uh, progressed.
Just out of curiosity, is there any mention made by the historian about the, the, uh, sign? The Bart, the, the neon Barton sign?
Uh, there is stuff in the report, uh, the, the, the newest one, like, the newer one out in front is actually from relatively, it was like the eighties or something like that, and there's, there's an older portion.
Big one on the, on the property line.
Yep.
Yep.
She, she does have stuff like that in her report, and the, um, when she asked Chris about it, uh, basically it was said that it's, there's a plan to preserve it, and there was no elaboration on, on what was gonna be done to us, so.
Okay. But that would be, that's not part of the development, that would be, you're gonna donate the structure to anyone?
That, that's, that's be, I, I don't know, I don't know exactly what the, what the.
You weren't, you weren't thinking of maybe putting it on the roof of the condo buildings, huh?
No. No.
Facing the, facing the lake?
No.
All right.
That's basically the, the project and kinda where we're at.
It's like, welcome to Laconia.
So, so I'll, I'll ask the question.
Yep.
Of course you will.
Charlie had, um, expressed an interest of keeping that sign.
Yep.
Is that gonna happen?
That, that has to be discussed with Chris Barton. If he, if he wants to keep it on, keep it, uh, I don't believe, it's not gonna be on site when this is done.
Okay.
It, it can be removed and taken somewhere, but I, I don't know exactly where, where it's going.
It'd look great near your yard, David. People could see it from all of Lakeport.
Let's put it on my roof.
That's it, exactly. He lives up in the top of the hill in Lakeport, so. Yeah, where all the rich people are.
Okay. All right, any questions for the applicant?
I got a question on this jellyfish system.
Yes.
Maintenance and monitoring, who's responsible, lifespan of this thing?
Uh, the, the, the filters themselves have to be replaced, uh, every, it's like five or six years, and annually, they need to go through just basically a cleaning, and, uh, Belmore, uh, down, Belmore Catch Basin Cleaning Company is, uh, the company that we're gonna be using, and they're actually doing the maintenance on several of them around, all around, uh, Lake Winnipesaukee, so they're, they know exactly how to, how to, what's involved with it, uh, they've been doing it, and they're gonna be the ones with the contract.
When is the historical study going to be available for review?
It, it's completed, uh, the, we have not got the letter back from DHR, uh, they said that they're.
You submitted it.
Yeah, we submitted all of our information to them, they held a hearing, and they're going to give us a written letter of their findings, which we're expecting any day now, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Oki?
I have a question, have you done any studies on the sewage that'll be created from a five-story condominium?
Can you hold that until I open the public hearing?
Oh, okay, I thought you did, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm, well, these are people asking questions, so, um, we, we wanna do staff, well, we've already heard from staff, I think, on this one. All right, any other questions for the applicant, from us, all right, so now at seven oh four, I will open the public hearing.
David's got a question.
David's got a question. Delay that order.
It's a short question.
Course it is.
So what are we looking for specifically for the applicant to complete, to revise, or bring before the board at the next public hearing?
We are looking for the details of the sidewalk. We are looking, we have, uh, their stormwater system, which includes the jellyfish, but it includes the slope of the parking lots and, and, and the usual drainage patterns, uh, we have that out to a third-party review, and they have raised a couple of questions, and we, we need the answers to those questions. Um, we will need to see the status of the shoreline permits, either. Submitted or they're approved, or whatever, whatever their status is, we, and at some point in time, we need to see their draft condominium documents.
Right.
Which part of the condominium documents will, uh, address the issue of who maintains the jellyfish, it would be the condominium association, it would be part of their maintenance dues that they would pay for overall maintenance of the project, which would include their stormwater, uh, maintenance as well.
Is there a lifespan for this jellyfish filter? Is there a?
The, the, the syst, the system itself, like, the, the, what it goes in is, is basically like a concrete structure, so that, that has as long as, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy years, like the regular catch basin, um, the filters themselves are the only, like, maintenance thing, and tho, those are replaceable.
And now, and then you, they have a lifespan of about five years?
Five or six years, yeah.
Okay.
And if they're, and basically, basically the maintenance is not much greater than, than sliding them up out and making sure they're completely cleaned off, so.
Yeah, you gotta keep your jellyfish clean.
Yep. But there's, uh, there's comparable products too, uh, Storm Tech, uh, that does the underground detention, uh, actually has another product that is basically the exact same thing, but mechanical treatments, so, there's, it's, it's not, it's not as uncommon as you think, so.
Right. Thank you, John.
We're also waiting for, um, the decision by the Heritage Commission concerning the demolition permit, obviously, if they.
Right.
Or whatever reason that does not occur.
Right.
I assume, I assume that's pending.
Uh, they will be meeting next week.
Okay.
Yep.
Cause I don't think there's anything.
So we'll have everything.
Historical about this.
The, the, it looks like we'll have all the answers, and we'll be ready, uh, to possibly vote on approval or disapproval, whatever, um, at the next meeting. So what I'd like to do now is open the public hearing, if there's anyone here that would like to be heard on the Barton's project, um, we'd love to have you come up to the mic, just identify yourself by name and address, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, department staff, I'm Warren Hutchins, I live at thirty-one Boathouse Road, which is in Ward Six, and I'm here this evening as an officer of the Bayside Cemetery Association Board of Directors. Uh, we were here for the conceptual plan review, and it's wonderful when that system works as this did, because following that, we met with the applicant and discussed our concerns with the limited parking that they had initially presented on their plan, and, uh, we applaud the changes to the addition of parking. And that gets us to a, a second point that we do have, and I have presented this, uh, um, request to the, uh, Director of, of Planning, and I would like to pass it out to you tonight, because, um, for you to consider it, uh.
We're very concerned, well, I don't know, just wait till I get back.
Thanks.
You certainly know your way around the room.
Been here ten years?
I know.
Three where you're sitting.
I know. Three of the best years of your life, though.
Two and a half, anyway, man.
Why did Kirk laugh?
Thank you.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
I think we all should get badges, will you guys get us badges?
Money would be better.
It's only fair. I'll wear a white shirt.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Get the new mayor to pay us instead.
The new mayor.
Our concern is really after the, uh, total construction, and the condominiums are sold, and that here, we, in order to protect and preserve the sanctity and dignity of the pla, of the Bayside Cemetery, we're asking that the planning board include this in their CUP, and then instruct by that CUP that they be included in the condo docks. This gives justification for action by the Board of Directors of the, um, of the condo project, and basically, it says here, residents and guests of the lakeside at Pogus Bay shall not operate or park vehicles on the internal roadways of the cemetery. Recreational vehicles of all types shall not trespass on the property of the Bayside Cemetery, the grounds shall not be used for sporting purposes. Our concern was that with thirty-two, uh, condominiums, you can have a substantial number of people, uh, on that property, and, uh, now with the increased parking, uh, it diminishes a concern, but if they exceed the number of slots, they're, they would be looking around for, where am I gonna park my car when I go visit my people? And we really don't want them in the cemetery parking on the internal, uh, road network, and also, we have maintained an open cemetery, uh, through the, uh, regular season, uh, winters, we, we, uh, close it down, but it's used tremendously for people, uh, not only visiting their, uh, their loved ones, but for people just walking. It has a tremendous sightline, and it's a very safe place for walking.
A beautiful lake, lake frontage, too.
And on the other side, we have the Margate, and they have, uh, uh, of, of course, people turning all the time, and we have not had issues with people, uh, walking on that property, and they have sufficient parking so that their guests don't think about it, but, um, we were careful in the wording here, is that we really don't want, uh, this to be a, uh, football tossing area, we really don't want, uh, segways running around our roads, we don't want motorized, uh, scooters, or bikes, or things of that nature. And, uh, we do have, uh, close to six thousand, uh, remains that we're entrusted with, and, uh, we, like you, are concerned about the, the character of Laconia, and the respect that we do have for those that are buried there. In fact, it'd be very hard to find anyone in this area that's like first or maybe second generation, that doesn't have a family member or friend, uh, interned in that cemetery. So that's our concern, and we hope that, uh, when the CUP is presented, the staff recommendation that, uh, this will be there, and that's the reason for it, and that we hope that you include that, and also with the instructions that it, uh, be forwarded so that the condo docks include this concept as well.
All right, well, thank you very much for that.
You're very welcome.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hutchins? I have a question for staff, so, isn't this a kind of thing that would be in a deed, like a deed restriction, rather than, I mean, I understand the reference to the condo documents, but, like, my deed, I'm adjacent to a church, and my deed has a restriction that's been there for a hundred years about building within fifteen feet of the church, or something like that, it would run with the property, right, if it was in the deed?
You, you could, you, we could put it in the deed, the, um, the reality is that most prospective buyers of condominium units are not gonna look at the deed, but they are going to look at the condominium documents.
Okay.
We have excellent support by the Laconia Police Department, and, uh, circling through and maintaining, uh, we have people coming in from the lake wanting to use the land for obvious purposes, and then we have other people that like to come down and park near the chapel and go down and use the lake, and, uh, we have been increasing our technology for security, and with the help of the police department, we address that, but this will just be such an obvious, um, area for, uh, residents or people, that we would appreciate your, your help.
All right, well, thank you, that was a very thoughtful presentation, thank you. I think Mr. Oki would like to respond.
I just want to add one thing on this.
Sure.
One of the things that, uh, we are already putting in there, uh, you guys were discussing it earlier, but, um, we're self-restricting Airbnb's on this project, so, there, we're already putting that in the documents, so everybody that will be here will be owners, that what, there aren't, uh, these aren't gonna be any short rentals and, uh, short-term rentals in this complex.
Is there fencing between the properties, along the property line?
There, there is fencing right now, and we're going to, we're gonna work with the cemetery and actually improve it, uh, to a, a bigger fence.
So there won't be any physical way for a, a vehicle to travel from your lot to the, to the cemetery?
No. No. Like where, where the.
They would have to go out to the street, come in the entrance by the mausoleum, right, okay.
Yes, that's correct.
Gotcha, where the city's gonna build a new sidewalk.
Yes.
And are you, are you, is the applicant comfortable with, uh, the inclusion in the condo documents of this, of this language? Okay.
Awesome, okay, are there any other butters, or members of the public? Come on up. Say hi, you're on TV. Say hi to your mom if you want, hi, mom.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Samantha Downs, um, I am a resident on Pogus Bay, um, my address is Zero Pogus Park Road, which is otherwise known as Little Island, Pogus Bay. Um, something that I need to, I have an agenda, but looking at the pictures, um, of the, of the structure, what strikes me is we, you know, presented something for a camp on Big Island, and a lot of the issues were noise pollution, light pollution, um, safety issues, and this structure is towering high, has open porches, um, yes, there are full-time residents, but they're probably not from this area, um, I think noise pollution is gonna be an issue, I think light pollution is gonna be an issue, so I would like to start with that. When speaking specifically of condos, if we compare what he has presented, when you look at Christmas Island, um, condos further down, the high-end Christmas Island condos, those are aesthetically pleasing, to me, this structure looks like a high-rise hotel, or a, um, sorry, but, you know, it looks like a college dorm.
Dormitory?
Um, if you look at the structure that was just constructed next to Watermark, that's something that's aesthetically pleasing, so for me, when I'm on my island, when I look to the west, I see a lot of aesthetically pleasing buildings, I see South Down Shores, I see, um, conservation land to the north, I see, um, Pogus Park Road houses, but when I look to the east, I really don't see a lot of aesthetically pleasing buildings, the Margate, of course, is one of them that is. I'm all for bringing people here, I'm all for providing housing.
Yep.
And live, work, play, but, you know, if we look at other areas like Wolfboro, Meredith, Alton, Center Harbor, would they approve this building on their bay? And this is our only bay in my, in our, in Laconia's, Winnipesaukee, you know, this is, this is our bay, so I implore you to, number one, not allow them to pack in, like, sardines, thirty-four units, five stories high, um, the garages that are at the street front basically look like storage units, you know, this is a thorough-through where we have Bike Week, residents of Laconia, you know, this is what we look at every day, not only from the roadside, but also from the bay, I look at it from the bay, and from the bay, there is a totally different perspective. It would be nice to see greenery, you know, something more aesthetically pleasing, like I said, the condos that are further down, or the one by Watermark. So in closing, I just implore you to really consider how high this is.
Yeah.
The garage is in the front, um, and I think we need to set the bar high, I think we need to, you know, if we keep allowing structures like this to come into our town, then it's just gonna keep happening, and this structure's gonna be here for a very, very long time, so, um, I think we need to, to set the standards high and look at the future, um, of Laconia and the construction that we're allowing to come here.
Yeah.
And let's preserve, especially the lakeside construction, um, and like I say, in this case, it's our only bay, it's our bay in Laconia.
It's our drinking water, too.
And our drinking water.
Yeah.
And the sewer, you know, someone presented that question, um, what about that?
Well, it'll be on city sewer and.
Well, they'll be on city sewer, and the stormwater would be treated. That's the jellyfish that we were talking about.
But the, you know, the fact that...
There won't be any discharge into the lake of untreated water.
Yeah.
So I, your concerns were raised, actually, when this project initially came before the board. We have a board member that's concerned about the view from the lake, too, because he lives on one of the islands, so.
Yeah, I mean, if you look ultimately, you know, the best of the best is Squam, you know?
The thing that's interesting about this to me is if you look at the history of the city of Laconia, its lakefront property from Lakeport all the way to, oh, McIntyre Circle, all the way to the cemetery, has always been commercial-industrial. There was a rail line that ran through that. There were ice houses. There were warehouses. There was a sawmill on Black Brook. There's still piles of, piles and piles of sawdust out there. And that's not the highest and best use for it anymore. It's valuable, and its best use under modern standards is residential, multifamily, residential or commercial. And it's been changing, one parcel at a time, you know, over the years. If not Barton's, what is actually the question, you know? And having the right to own a property also gives you the right to tear it down, or to sell it. So, but we are sensitive to that. I mean, we know that aesthetic is important. Hopefully someday, there'll be a wild trail on the other side of that lake, and that, the view from the wild trail is something that we want our visitors to go home and tell their friends about, and, you know, so we'll keep it in mind.
Thank you.
I promise.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
I think this young lady had something. Get her up here? All right. He said, get you up here.
She's been waiting.
That's okay. I'm Jane LaRoche, and I live in Ward Three. And a lot of people in my area asked me to come here and speak on behalf. Ms. Downs just said a lot of what I wanted to say, so I won't be repetitive, but our main focus is on aesthetics. I mean, for years, Laconia's been very focused on, let's make this a charming community.
Right.
You know, there's so much charm. I mean, even what they just did in Center Harbor with that old hotel, it's beautiful. Meredith, beautiful. It just got voted one of the top ten quaint towns in New Hampshire. They would never allow this to happen. Five-story condominiums on the waterfront? It's great that we're going to be having more housing for people, but five stories on the waterfront, there's, and they're not attractive. Something needs to be done. They look like self-storage units on Union Ave for the garages. I mean, it's like going down Route Eleven in Alton, seeing all these self-storage units. That's what that looks like. I'm sorry. But something can be done better architecturally to make it look better. And I think five stories on the water is definitely unacceptable for what Laconia's trying to achieve. We've been wanting to clean up this town and make it look good. This is going to set us back.
Yeah.
You know, and yes, I'm concerned about sewage. What kind of stress is it going to put on our sewer lines? How old are those sewer lines in that area now? And when they need to be replaced, who's going to pay for it?
We are.
Yeah.
The water users.
I mean, there's just a lot of other things to look at.
Oh, I hear you.
But I think aesthetics should be, isn't, it shouldn't be that hard to fix. But what they're proposing, I'm sorry, is not what Laconia's direction should be, not if we want to be quaint and look like New Hampshire.
Right.
This just doesn't work, and I'm sorry if I'm being negative here.
Don't be sorry. This is a public hearing.
I'm just concerned about Laconia.
Yeah.
I'm a native of New Hampshire, not Laconia. I've been here eleven years, but it's a beautiful town. Let's make it better.
I think so, too. I think so, too.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. I have a question for staff. So the performance zoning, does it give this board any additional powers regarding aesthetics?
Does not.
Okay. And that's pretty much limited to, there were some standards adopted at some point, weren't there?
We do have suggested architectural standards. Quite frankly, they are subjective.
Oh, I understand that.
And difficult for the board to require certain types of things.
Right. My recollection is that the aesthetics or the detail on the buildings has changed from the initial proposal that we saw. Is that correct?
They're pretty, they're pretty similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the initial ones, basically, some of the initial ones didn't show the walkout level of it.
Yeah.
So I think one of the initial ones had, like, showed four stories, but...
There are, are there existing trees within the Shoreland Protection Zone?
Yes.
Will you be required to keep some of those, do you think?
Yes.
Okay. Because within that part of the...
Some of them we do, and some of them we're, we're under request.
Huh?
John, what's the current height on that building?
What's that?
What are the current heights for your proposal?
The proposed heights?
Yeah.
They're just under the sixty feet. That's a lot.
Is that from ground level, John, or water level?
That's the average. That's the average. We went, we went through the whole, yeah, we went through the whole calculation with the building department and the fire department, and Charlie looked at all heights, so.
All right. Well, they're going to go through some permitting there, for sure. Anyone else want to come up? Hello there?
Hi there.
How are you?
My name's Michelle, and I live right in downtown Laconia here. And I just have a question as to who these condos are going to be sold to. Are they going to be sold to people who already live in this area? Or are they going to be sold to out-of-staters who are just going to come in and...
Out-of-staters.
Party and have fun and leave?
Whoever, whoever, they'll be, they'll be put up for sale, and whoever buys them, if it's local, it's local, if it's not, it's not.
But who are they priced for?
Everybody. I think they're priced for everybody. Who's in that particular budget? Be it out-of-staters, local Laconian residents...
Well, I guess that's what I'm, I'm asking, because...
I just...
The budget of somebody who lives here is not the budget of somebody coming up from Mass who makes a hundred and fifty thousand a year.
I disagree with you. And let me tell you why. I drove down Union Street here today, and I see this local gentleman driving a $200,000 Mercedes-Benz. He's a local. He's a local kid. So if he can afford to buy one of these units, I don't see why, we're not building, or these developers aren't building properties to suit what the budget of the Laconia buyers are.
I guess my concern is that...
Right.
I live here, and I can't afford to get anywhere near the water. And with buildings like this, I'm not even going to be able to see it.
But right now, you know, this particular building's interesting for me, because I've seen a lot of people commenting on this property. Currently, it's a motel, so if you want access to the water, you've got to go check in the motel. Means you've got to pay for it to get in there, then you can go use their water in the summer. You've got a private developer who wants to buy it. He wants to put up some buildings, and he wants to make some money. Based on what I can tell, rough guessing, you've got, you're going to be adding at least sixteen million dollars in new taxable income for the city. So these folks who are buying that property are going to spend their money, they're going to pay their taxes, whether or not they're from, and I've heard this a couple times, they're not from here. Most of the people here aren't from here. Most of the people buying all this lakefront are not from here. But I don't see how anybody would want to restrict, this is Laconia. We love Laconia. Except if you're not from here, we don't want you here. So...
Not it at all. But I want it to be accessible to people who live here.
I understand that. So they're not going to build this and sell them for a hundred thousand dollars if they can get seven hundred thousand for them. That's what they're looking at. At the end of the day, it's, how much money can I make? That's what these businessmen are doing. And I absolutely understand and respect that. That's going on everywhere.
I agree.
You know, so...
And I just did a rough calculation based on the unverified information.
Trust me.
You're talking assessed valuation of fifteen million?
I'm figuring these, if you lowballed these at five hundred thousand apiece, you got thirty-two, you're adding sixteen million, but I don't think they're going to be that low.
And the tax rate is what, twenty-three? So if you multiply twenty-three percent, fifteen million by twenty-three percent, you get three million, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in taxes. So the advantage...
That's wrong.
That's wrong. Well, because that's wrong. But it's a lot of money. Let's put it that way. It's a lot of money.
And that's a low number.
And it's on one property that's generating all that. So from a revenue generating point of view, which, of course, the council has to deal with every budget season.
Three hundred and forty thousand.
Absolutely.
You know, it's a lot of money. So I get you. And for the record, this is Michelle LeBlanc. She's a friend of mine.
I'm sorry, yes, LeBlanc.
Yes. I said it French, but I'm sorry.
The other thing I would simply comment on is I hear this aesthetic thing. Aesthetically, I actually like this property. Maybe I just have the worst taste in the room, but I think it is an attractive property.
I think it's a very nice-looking building, but I think it's a little overwhelming for lakeside.
Maybe. But see, you know, I think it's aesthetically pleasing. I can't see it from the lake because I'm not on the lake.
Right.
Right? I haven't been there. So, but, so I'm looking at illustrations of this property, and I think it looks like a really, it's going to be a really good-looking property. Unfortunately, again, a developer who's buying this property is looking to maximize his return. That's the bottom, that's all it comes down to. Money. You know, the society we live in, everybody wants to maximize their return. The other catch for me is, has always been, I'm a property rights person. If you're entitled and you meet the qualifications to do it, I don't see why anybody should ever tell you that. Because if it came to your particular personal property, you don't want someone telling you, restricting what you can do. Oh, you can't put that flower garden there.
Right.
It's your property. You want to put it in, put it in.
Well, there are condo restrictions, I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, this one's unique, but I actually like this property.
Well, there is that. We do appreciate your comments, though, Michelle. Absolutely. Yes, come on up, sir. It's like the Price is Right. Come on down. There you go. No, there are no prizes. I'm sorry.
Good evening, Planning Board and people here. My name is Dr. David Livingston, 394 Union Avenue. I first arrived here in Laconia about forty-five years ago. At that point, I was a brand-new, young orthodontist, had an office where the parking lot for the Happy Cow now is, and looked across the street and looked at the property there and said, you know, I want to see Laconia get better. I want to see the town improve.
Can you back off the mic just a little bit?
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm a big believer in this town, and I'm a big believer in the value of Laconia. To prove my point, I literally built Union Square. It's right across the street from the high school, sells pizzas on one end of it. I wasn't involved with that part of it. And the other part is kind of across the street from the 405. So that's...
You but the public defenders. It used to be cable, cable company used to be in there.
So I was very concerned with the aesthetics. I was very concerned with making Laconia better. I spent many a night in this very room and did hand-to-hand combat, but I digress. I would just say, look at the results. And the results are aesthetically pleasing, because the results are something that the town of Laconia can be very proud of. I'm proud of it. In my opinion, the proposal for the property that is being discussed this evening is absolutely hellacious. The buildings are way too high. Just listening to the little goings-on tonight, they said there's thirty-some-odd units, and they've got two parking places and a guest place. That's, that's about a hundred cars on a small piece of property. If you happen to go into the Union Diner and try to turn out, you can't do it if you're going the wrong way. Well, now you're just going to compound that. The city of Laconia has many, many issues to think about. And creating a tax base is one, yes, I've done it. But it also has more to think about than just trying to create a tax base. It has a great deal to think about in creating a town and a city on the lake that is, in my humble opinion, dead last of any city on the lake as far as the aesthetics. Just came up this evening. And if you look at the buildings that are proposed, sure, they're trying to make the most money they can out of it, but the city of Laconia shouldn't be looking to say, how can we take a shoehorn and pack as much in to as little favorable property as we can? That's absolutely stupid. The city of Laconia needs to sit up and wake up and do something about it. And in the doing something about it, the Planning Board has a great amount of say, I would, I would guess. I don't know the laws. I, it's, it's...
We don't have a lot of say over the aesthetics.
Okay.
Because there are technical requirements that these developers have to meet, and once they meet those technical requirements, and, you know, and it's a permitted use, you know all that.
Well, one of the, one of the requirements that apparently is being asked for is a waiver for the density. And that is absolutely absurd. That's part of the problem, is the city, not the city, the city isn't trying to do it. You guys have to take what comes to you.
Right.
But you're being presented with this stuff that people come in and say, how can I run it up and get as much out of it as I can? Slam-bam, thank you, and goodbye.
So we're not going to have a vote on it tonight.
I understand.
I can tell you that we will take into consideration the density, because they are coming to us under our new performance zoning, which is a more flexible way of getting the appropriate approvals, far more flexible than when you developed Union Square. And I must say, you did a wonderful job with that. You know, you, you tried to match the New England style, you had stone walls and capes, you know what I mean? And they're functional, and they, and they produce income for you. And the only difference here, sir, though, is that these people would like to have some income from the redevelopment rather than the continued use and the rentals.
I understand what you're saying thoroughly.
And so we will take that into consideration, is what I...
What I'm saying, though, is, in my opinion, I think it is awful for this board to even consider granting a waiver to make the density usage more. That property, if it was to be developed to help the city of Laconia...
Right.
Two-story buildings with lots of landscaping and a whole bunch fewer units, and a whole bunch fewer cars dumping in and out on Union Avenue, because it's, it's going to do nothing but take the city of Laconia and drag it down another couple of notches.
Thank you, Dr. Livingston.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thanks.
John, how many units are currently in that motel?
I don't actually know the answer to that. I could, I could find out.
Probably forty or fifty.
There's about forty parking spots out front of just the two motel buildings.
Yep, yep. And they're aging buildings. I mean, they were built in the sixties and fifties. Okay. Are there any other members of the public that would like to be heard regarding the, what's the name of the development? I'm sorry. I don't want to call it Barton's anymore.
Lakeside at Pogus Bay.
Lakeside at Pogus Bay.
Lakeside at Pogus Bay.
Okay.
And the developer is actually the same developer that did Christmas Island.
Oh, well, there you go. Well, then they're capable of producing something that's aesthetically pleasing? Demonstrated that. All right.
This parcel is, this parcel is different in the location of it...
Yep.
Than Christmas Island, and it's a different, it's a different zone, it's a different, it's a different aesthetic than, than what we had at Christmas Island.
Right. Right.
Christmas Island was, I mean, we, we did it as duplexes, and there, we looked at, we looked at a bunch of different styles on this, on this parcel. We basically approached this the same way we did Christmas Island, and same architect, same everything. It's the same team that did Christmas Island, and this is what we came up with for this parcel, so.
All right, well, thank you very much. Any other members of the public who are butters, that wish to be heard this evening? All right, it is seven forty. I think what we need now is a motion to continue the public hearing to the April, is it, second? Seventh? To April seventh?
Just in your rate, Dean came up with a figure of three hundred and change for tax base. Three hundred thousand.
Yeah, if, if, if the assessed value was fifteen million, the, the tax bill would be about three forty-five.
Which is not bad.
Well, math, you know, is not my strong suit.
You just missed the decimal point.
That's the story of my life, man. All right, so would anyone like to make?
We'll apply that tax rate to you.
David, we don't wanna go there. David, would you make a motion, please?
I will. I move that we table this hearing until April seventh at our next public hearing.
Is there a second to the counselor's motion?
I'll second.
It's seconded by Ms. Jenna. Is there any discussion regarding this motion?
Can I ask a question? Before performance zoning, what would have been the allowable number of units? Was it twenty-six?
Depends, if it was a cluster, right? You could do a cluster there, right?
Well, approximately twenty-six units would be allowed. Under, Rob and I have been having a side discussion here. So originally, when this was proposed to you in the fall with the conceptual design, they were approaching it from a performance zoning standpoint, because they thought they were going to need some relief from setbacks, and, and possibly some other aspects of the design. As the design stands currently, they completely conform to the regular zoning, the underlying zoning for that zone.
As far as the, the height?
Height.
The number of units?
Setbacks, everything.
Okay.
So, they don't currently need relief?
They don't need any conditional use approval from the performance zoning standpoint. They conform to everything in the underlying zoning for the UC zone.
So, they fit without any kind of performance zoning consideration?
Correct.
Is that right?
Correct, they do now.
Well, that's, that's, that wasn't my understanding, and that's, that's good to know.
Right. Understood.
So, the, the thing that runs through all this, of course, is that the purpose of zoning, when zoning ordinances were first enacted, was to, over time, change land use into a more acceptable form. And so, if you had a non-conforming use right now, it's grandfathered, unless it's abandoned. And, but, that means that it takes a very long time for change to happen. I'm, I'm not gonna tell you that the demolition of Barton's and the construction of the new structure is necessarily an improvement. But from the standpoint of the zoning ordinance and the intent of those ordinances, it's right down the middle. It increases the tax base, it increases green space, it's, it, it meets all the other criteria. And so long as it does, it puts the board in a situation where, we're not likely to deny it based simply because we don't like the way it looks. And I reserve judgment on that, I mean, I haven't.
Point of order?
Huh?
Point of order?
Yes, sir.
Motion to table is not subject to further, further debate or consideration?
Thank you for being our parliamentarian this evening, sir.
You're welcome.
Would, would we like to therefore vote on the motion to table? All those in favor, please indicate by raising their hands. Opposed? Abstained? It was unanimous? All right. Well, thank you very much for your presentation tonight, John. We'll see you next month.
See you next month.
Where are we? White Oaks Road, it's a boundary line adjustment, everyone's favorite. PL twenty nineteen dash zero one five one S U, seven twenty-four and six eighteen White Oaks Road. We need a motion to accept the application, and we'll ask staff for a recommendation on that.
One hundred percent ready to go.
Hundred percent? We get a hundred percent, Dave? All right, so can we please have a motion to accept?
I'll make a motion that we accept the request for the boundary line adjustment, PL two zero one nine dash zero one five one S U.
A motion by Mr. Bellavoe, is there a second?
Second.
And second by Mr. Bounds? Is there any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Unanimous? All right. Let's hear from the applicant, please.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Brian Bailey, I'm a surveyor here from Guilford.
Brian, tip the mic up just a little bit. Thank you much.
Okay, is that better?
Thanks, sir, it's good to see you again.
Thank you. I'm here to represent this boundary line adjustment. It's a piece of property that is presently thirty-three point nine acres in size, and is located off of White Oaks Road. And is, is behind all the lots that front on White Oaks Road.
Second tier.
Yes, it, it's the backland, as it were, owned by the Ferraros. And the abutting property, which is one of those fronting lots, as shown on the plan at the bottom, being lot two oh eight dash two forty-one dash one, is going to be the receiving party in, in this boundary line adjustment. And I like to characterize this as a one-way exchange, rather than a, I'll give you a little, you'll take a little, you know, which we, which we see all, all too often to address issues regarding buildings too close and stuff. So this is a very large exchange of land. We're gonna take from the thirty-three point nine acres, fifteen point three acres of land, and annex it to the, the front lot, which is presently two point nine acres. So this is not creating any new lots, this is not a subdivision, there are no new building lots being created. And the remainder lot from the Ferraros is gonna still remain at eighteen point six acres. One of the things that makes this, one of the items that made this project a little stickier than normal is that the frontage being left for the remainder lot is less than the frontage required for the zone. And with that in mind, we had to go before the zoning board of adjustment to request a variance to do this, to allow for that re, that creation of the new lot with less than the requisite frontage for the zone.
Gotcha.
And that was granted.
Because you only have the frontage that's down at the.
The driveway hits the road.
There.
There's, it looks like there's two existing drives into this property.
There are.
There, there's a south entrance between two oh eight, two forty-one, one, and two oh eight, two forty-one, two.
Correct.
And then there's a northern one between two forty-one, three, and two forty-one, one.
Yes.
Right? Is that a paved access road, or is that gravel?
It's a gravel driveway.
And it, is, is it used for, by the adjacent lots for access as well?
Uh, actually, it is. I show on there that the abutting lot owned by Wiley seems to have an accessway that's taken, tearing off of it.
Kinda behind their house, perhaps?
I'm, I'm not sure, I, I guess I'd have to defer to the landowners, they're here this evening.
I'm sure, yeah, okay.
And they, if necessary, but I mean, clearly, there's a.
Will you explain to me what the, what you needed the variance for again?
The remainder lot, the eighteen acres, is only gonna have what you'd characterize as the northern accessway.
Gotcha.
So, they're selling the southern accessway to the abutter, so therefore, the resultant lot for the Ferraros, the remainder that they're keeping, will be reduced in, in overall frontage. Their present frontage is made up in two spots. And we're selling the southern part, and the northern part's not big enough.
Gotcha.
And therein lies the variance.
Okay. All right, are there any questions for our surveyor friend here? All right, sensing none. Uh, staff? Okay. All right, then we'll have a public hearing. Are there any, let's see, seven fifty-one PM, we will open the public hearing. Are there any butters here? Any butters to this brown boundary line adjustment? Are there any members of the public that would wish to be heard? All right. Sensing none, then I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-one thirty-nine, to be exact, Karina. And now, the staff will speak to us.
The plan meets the requirements outlined in the site plan regulation, giving, recognizing that they obtained a variance. And we recommend that the board accept, grant the conditional approval with the following criteria, that they get us our final plans by August, and they have a completion of everything, which is basically recording of documents by March of next year. And then we have the usual monumentation notations.
So, just to explain, 'cause the, my brain's not working tonight. You said this is not a subdivision.
It's not, it is a boundary line. There are, there are, there are two lots involved now.
Right.
When this is done.
You're just changing the size of the lots.
Changing the configuration of two lots. You're changing the configuration of the, of the lot that you mentioned at the lower.
Yeah.
Southern corner of the property, that becomes much bigger, so if essentially there are.
And that's the road frontage that they've lost in the up, so parcel B. Where is par, I don't see parcel B on the sign. Where does it say parcel B? Oh, B is the.
So, they used to have enough frontage with the two driveways, and then they split in half.
Gotcha.
They only have half the frontage.
Yep.
You know, this guy's gonna build a house back.
So, lot two oh eight, two forty-one, one becomes larger? Their rear property line, in a, in a, in effect, rotates up to be the center line between, in, in the middle of the larger parcel. And they're also taking over that southern leg.
What's the slope there?
What's the what?
The slope to that part.
Slope?
Yeah.
There is a slope there, and there's a lot, a lot of wetlands out there.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's backland.
The intention of, our understanding of the intention of the person that is receiving the property is, they just wanna preserve the property in its present state.
Is it, is it forested?
I don't know. Yes.
Yeah.
Told yes.
Probably was pasture land at one point, I've seen pictures.
Sure was.
Of, of everything from the beginning of Lake Street to the Weir's was clear-cut, everything. So, all right. Thank you very much. So, staff, you recommending that we, that we grant this application?
Yes, sir.
Well, any discussion, folks? Any questions for staff? Any burning desires to make a motion, then? David, what a surprise.
This is a backtick, application PL two oh one nine dash oh one five one S U, a boundary line adjustment. I move that we grant conditional approval with the following criteria, as recommended by the staff. Roman numeral one, one A, B, and C. Roman numeral two, one A, B, C, and D.
Motion by Counselor Bounds, is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Ms. Jenna. Any discussion on the motion? Sensing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? And it's unanimous. Boundary line adjustment has been granted. All right, we're moving right along. PL twenty twenty zero zero one seven S U, Forty-five Dollar Street and one fifty-five Baldwin Streets, proposal for a boundary line adjustment. We need a motion to accept. First, is the application ready for acceptance?
It is.
Is it a hundred percent?
It is a hundred percent.
A hundred percent again, we have a hundred percent? Well, he said it last time.
I feel more like we're at an auction.
We have a hundred percent?
Do I have two hundred percent?
All right, all right, so, maybe I've been watching auction shows. Okay, it's more amusing, isn't it? All right, does anybody want to make this motion, or will you just sit here all night?
I'll make a motion to accept application PL twenty twenty dash zero zero one seven S U for a boundary line adjustment for Forty-five Dollar and one fifty-five Baldwin.
Thank you, we have a motion to accept the application by Ms. Jenna, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second by secretary, so, any discussion? Sensing none, all those in favor signify by raising their hand. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Hi, would you identify yourself for the record, please? Yes, put that mic down.
My name is Michelle LeBlanc, I live at Forty-five Dollar Street.
How are you?
I got five minutes to my bedtime.
Oh, jeez, well, you better hurry up. Well, you better, well, you go right ahead, tell us all about it.
Uh, so I am looking to have a boundary line adjustment done, because my son has been parking on the neighbor's lawn for eleven years, and she has agreed to give us that seven feet. And that's it.
Cool. All right. So.
I even have a picture that shows the boundary line right up through the middle of my son's car.
Really? Well, that was very nice of your neighbor, to work that out with you. And you've gotta do all the documentation.
Yes. I didn't realize it was gonna be quite so expensive, but.
Well, gee. What a surprise, right?
Right, right. I guess I'll have to wait another year to get it paved.
Well, you have a very nice property, ma'am, I was happy to have seen it. Is there anyone, any, any questions for the applicant? All right. Let's open the public hearing, then. Seven fifty-eight. Are there any butters here? This is Dolph and Baldwin. Any, it's, oh, it's right where Baldwin and Dolph come together, that's why it's.
Yes.
Her address is Baldwin Street, and yours is?
She is on that little jog that Baldwin Street takes up to Baldwin Street Extension, and I'm the last house on, on Dolph Street.
Ah, that.
We're right next to each other.
That explains that, okay. And any butters or members of the public? Sensing none, I will close the public hearing at seven fifty-nine. Staff?
Beats the requirements of the site plan regulation, after one fifty-five Baldwin received a variance. The Dolph Street address is receiving a small sliver of land from the Baldwin Street address. So there, even, even though the Dolph Street address is, is a non-conforming lot when it comes to frontage, they're increasing it, so it's a non-issue.
Right.
The Baldwin Street address was already a non-conforming lot, and now they're becoming more non-conforming, and they did receive a variance already from the zoning board of adjustment. We have our recommendations that you grant the conditional approval with the deadlines that are recommended here for final plans and completion, and there are a couple of corrections to the, to the plan that needs to be updated before they file their final plans.
What's the non-conformity at Baldwin? Is it the setbacks, or?
It's, should be an eighty-foot frontage, and they only will have fifty feet when they're done.
Oh, I see, so they're losing seven feet of.
Correct.
Oh, I see, so they're losing seven feet of, of street frontage, and they're already grandfathered.
They're already under the minimum, they're an existing non-conforming lot, but they're going smaller, so therefore, they needed the variance. The, the, the Dolph Street lot is getting larger, so they do, that's fine, that's directionally correct.
Right. Yeah, well, I think they did, when they developed that neighborhood, they did the best they could, but there was existing, um, non-conforming structures from the start. I still don't understand why they, they doglegged Baldwin, but...
Before all our time.
Yeah, it was, indeed.
If you figure it out, let us know.
I will, I will, I sure, certainly will, okay. Thank you very much, so staff recommends that we do it. Does anyone, um, want to jump in?
I'll make a motion that we, uh, accept PL two zero two zero dash zero zero one seven SU, Forty-five Dolph and one fifty-five Baldwin Street. Boundary line adjustment, um, also accepting the staff recommendations in Roman numeral one and two.
And by accepting, you mean approving?
Approving, yes.
All right.
Conditional approval.
Just to clarify that, um, is there a second to Mr. Bellows' excellent motion? There is a second from the vice chair. All right, is there any further discussion regarding this boundary line adjustment? So this lady's son can legally park.
And she can go to bed.
I can go to bed, I have to get up at four AM.
All right, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Yay!
Good evening and good night.
Thank you.
All right. Who do we send to bed next? Oh, Phil? Phil, are you getting tired, is it close to your bedtime? All right, PL twenty twenty zero zero one nine SU, eleven ninety-seven Union Avenue slash eighty-five Zion Hill. Proposal for boundary line adjustment. We need a motion to accept, is it in order and ready for acceptance?
One hundred percent.
One hundred percent, David.
Going once, going twice.
There you go, you want to go one hundred ten on this one? All right, so David, was that a motion?
Yeah, I move to accept the application, um, PL two oh two oh dash oh one nine SU, boundary line adjustment, um...
Okay. Uh, second?
I'll second.
And there's a, a second by Ms. Bounds, I mean, motion by Mr. Bounds, and second by Ms. Jenna. All right.
You hurried us that quick?
Huh?
Justice of the peace.
Yeah, yeah, I get you guys. All right, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? The motion carries. What do you have to say for yourself, Attorney Brouillard?
Well, I'm here tonight, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board on behalf of Lake Street and Bible Church, and the Stephen R. Wally, you know, Intervivos Trust, uh, which has the HK Powersports, uh, uh, business on it. Uh, business has been good, uh, more storage is needed. Uh, and an agreement was made with the Bible Church, who has some excess property to do a boundary line adjustment. Uh, these folks have worked together, uh, in the past on some other property. And we have a, uh, ambiguous parcel B of one point one acres that we would be adding to the Wally property at eleven ninety-seven Union Avenue and taking away, uh, from the Bible Church property. These are, uh, there will only be two more lots. This land is, uh, is basically butts up against the Gold Star Golf Cart property, and it, which is commercial, um, and, uh, there's no variance necessary. Uh, we agree with all the staff reports, um, and it's a, it's a wooded, uh, flat parcel. And, uh, I know that the, uh, members of the Church Council are here, uh, to speak, uh, in favor of it. It's a very simple matter, uh, and, uh, we ask for your consideration and approval this evening, conditional approval, uh, subject to the staff report, which we concur with.
I like the, the aerial photographs with the Trump-like marker on it, that's very nice.
Uh, well, I do have my gifts, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, absolutely. Okay, we have, uh, heard from the applicant, are there any questions for the applicant regarding this event? All right, sensing none, let's have a public hearing, eight oh five PM. Are there any abutters that would like to be heard? Come on up. You've been sitting here all night long. Come on up and get in the sunshine here.
I don't have much to add to what the attorney just, uh, mentioned, but we're certainly in favor of, uh, uh, this transaction, and we're very happy to do this.
What's your, what's your name, sir?
My name is James Rhodes, and I'm part of the advisory committee.
And you're a trustee, or...
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, if I recall, last year, you were before us because of a, a building which you discovered at the last minute you didn't actually own, or something?
Well, that wasn't really exactly correct.
Oh, of course it wasn't, as I said it, but, I mean, you can correct me.
Well, that was a contention, but, uh, a former pastor, uh, certainly was an investor in one of the two houses, and we're working to resolve that with him.
Okay.
Hoping to do so soon, but it has nothing to do with this piece of land, so...
But this is, this will, um, uh, this, this exchange, uh, will, will certainly be beneficial to, to the Bible Church.
It will.
Okay, and, and that's, that's good. And Mr. Wally will get, uh, what's he going to build there, a storage building?
Most probably, he doesn't exactly know right this second.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, uh, what we have is a boundary line adjustment, everybody. Staff?
Uh, meets all the requirements in the site plan regulation. We recommend you grant approval with the, uh, recommendations outlined, in parts, uh, Roman numerals one and two.
Anybody want to say so moved? I take that. So moved, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Bellows. Is there any discussion? Sensing none, I'll call the question, all those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Another unanimous vote?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Brouillard.
Get you home at a decent hour.
Always good to see you.
Nice to see you, thank you.
He does look like Perry Mason, yes. That, that was intended as a compliment, you know? Does he have a secretary that looks like Dallas Street? My goodness. All right, what else we got left? Did we just clear the agenda?
No.
No. There's more.
Just minor.
Uh, planning board member appointed to Historic District Commission? All right, isn't that the next one, new business?
Mm-hmm.
Are we looking for, um, a volunteer to sit on the HD, the newly created HTC?
Uh, you could be looking, yes, we're looking for someone on the board that wants to be the planning board representative and a full voting member on the Historic District Commission. And as I has indicated to you, Mr. Chairman, Charlie St. Clair has, has expressed to me a desire to be that person, but I'm not sure if there's someone else, and then the board could make a decision.
I cannot think of a better gift to give to the Historic District Commission than Representative St. Clair. I think he will be exactly what they will need in order to thoroughly vest, uh, vet all their, um, applications they can afford. So, I think we need to make a motion to appoint, um, Representative St. Clair.
I move to appoint Charlie St. Clair to the Historic.
We have a motion from Counselor Bounds, do we have a second? A second, once again, from Ms. Jenna. Any discussion on this motion? As his beeper goes off, as his phone goes off. All those in favor signify by raising their hands. Opposed? Charlie's on.
Ed, I nominated you last time.
I heard.
Did he really say he wanted to do this?
Oh, yeah, it's true, yeah, just because you weren't here.
Yeah.
Don't you owe that? All right, Lake Street and Planning Commission.
It happens all the time when we nominate people to the Historic and Commissions who aren't here.
Have you, have you been, I have not been to a meeting since that, personally?
I haven't got an email for the next meeting either.
Oh, yeah, I missed the last quarterly, so, I am remiss, uh, who else is, um...
Dean Anson.
Oh, Dean, yeah, I'll keep going with him. They, the, the, just for general knowledge, for those of you, especially new people, the Lake Street and Planning Commission, there's a statute that authorizes the creation of regional planning commissions. And their role is to, is mostly focused on infrastructure and land use trends. Um, they also offer us technical assistance on certain projects, and they've helped us with drafts of the, redrafts of the, um, the master plan. So, anyway, there's nothing to report then. Does anyone want to talk about conservation? Who's our representative to con?
You don't have one, if someone would like to be the representative of the Conservation Commission, they would be thrilled to have someone.
Well, you know, Ed was nominated previously for a position and didn't get it, so I think it's only fair...
You don't need to do me any favors.
I think it's only fair, out of respect to our, our vice chair, that he be nominated as our representative to the Conservation Commission.
Unfortunately, I'm just not around like I'd like to be. That's my dilemma these days.
Is it?
Oh, Jay's coming back from Florida, isn't he?
Who?
Jay.
Oh, is he? Is Jay still a member? No, he's, he's gone.
Oh, it doesn't go both ways, that's what you're telling me.
Forester.
He's still a member of the board.
Yes?
Yes, he is.
So he's coming back from Florida soon?
That's the plan.
Not summer, not in a month. Does anybody here want to do it? That's the real question, does anybody here want to do it?
Even the newbies, you know?
I used to be the chairman.
You used to be the chair of conservation?
Yeah.
Would you like to be our liaison?
No, she came over to the dark side. She's not going back.
Oh, you mean they'd be mean to her? No, 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 I said, Dean is the chair, isn't he?
Yes.
Dean Anson?
Oh, maybe it's all new people.
I'm sure, yeah.
Had a rotation.
Yeah, did, were you on, uh, the commission when Rick DeMark was?
Oh, no.
No.
It was many years ago.
Well, so was Rick. So was I. So you'd like, you'd like to do it, then? Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 that's not what you're saying.
You'd be willing, let's change that phraseology.
If Charlie can't make it to the heritage, I'll be happy to go in his place, if he's up.
Yeah, but you already have the knowledge, I mean, conservation can get pretty...
I know.
Detailed, and the permitting, and all the wetland stuff. And, and that's the important thing.
This is called arm twisting.
I think she said, been there, done that.
You will get it, you will get, you know, the same pay.
Do I have to, uh, take notes and make reports or anything?
You, you don't have to take notes if you don't want to, but occasionally you might want to let us know what they're up to. And also, because of your technical background in that area, you may be of great assistance to the board when we're considering certain applications. Uh, we, we do get complicated, uh, issues regarding, um, environmental matters.
This is still called arm twisting.
Well, David, what do you suggest we do?
I suggest we get, we wait till somebody wants to do it.
Oh, she does, she's just afraid to say it.
I just hesitate.
Well, let her speak. It's her first night.
Let her speak for herself.
Jewel might want to do it, I will make sure I offer it to her, and if she doesn't, I will show up.
All right, so we'll take it up at the next meeting. David, what is the city council up to?
Pardon?
It's your liaison.
No, there's nothing to report.
Nothing to report, city council is not doing anything.
We're waiting for the committee to get back together again, we're pulling that together, so...
The, um, master plan steering?
Master Plan Steering Committee, whatever you want to call it.
Yep. My goal, as I, as I said before, is to get the master plan done this year, and that's doable?
Sure.
Yep, well, let's try that, I, I'm, I'm on that committee, so I'd like to see that. Are there any other applicants that are in the pipeline? I know I, I twisted somebody's arm, a former chair of this board, to sign up.
To be on the board?
Huh?
To be, to, to be on the board?
To be on the board as a current member.
Uh, we, uh, we were very fortunate with the last go-around, where we had, uh, five applicants for two openings.
Oh.
And so we are currently at a full board, including full alternates.
Did Gary apply, Gary Dial?
He did not.
Oh, so I guess my arm twisting wasn't all that effective in that case.
So we have reached out to the people who did not get appointed to the planning board to see if they would be interested in one of the other land use boards where we do have openings. We have openings on Conservation Commission, Heritage Commission...
Zoning.
Uh, we have some alternate positions on zoning, yes.
Excellent, excellent. And just so you guys all know, um, I've gone, talking about going over the dark side. After thirty years of working in the field of child protection, I am now, uh, working for the Department of Environmental Services. So, um, that might, that knowledge might come in handy from time to time, because I, I don't know, I'm beginning to learn. It's very interesting, I, I used basically two statutes in my past job, and the DES is, they administer maybe forty statutes, and regulate, uh, all, all kinds of things, so my learning curve is pretty steep right now, but I like it because it does tie into the land use stuff.
Congratulations.
Yeah, well, we'll see. And I am the new guy, I'm walking around going, you know, where are the bathrooms, so... All right, um, uh, there are other business I wanted to ask about training opportunities. Um, we have a lot of new members.
Correct.
We've talked about this for a while. The other idea I had was whether maybe we could organize with a facilitator, like a retreat.
We have, uh, an opportunity with the New Hampshire Municipal Association, uh, for them to come in and do a training for land use boards, so it wouldn't be just planning board, it would be all of the land use boards.
Yeah.
To cover things like right to know law, and, uh, how to conduct meetings, how to treat applicants, et cetera. So, we're, we're going to try to arrange that for a little bit later in the spring, when everyone's back. The Office of Strategic Initiatives is going to have their annual, uh, conference training, uh, session in, uh, May, I believe it is. Uh, we will send you out the details for that. Obviously, the city will pay any registration fees that you incur to go that.
Anything like in California or the Caribbean?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Uh, and then, uh, uh, the Hampshire Planners Association will have, uh, an opportunity as well here, as the year progresses.
Yep, if you, if, they're very good trainings, and, and, uh, it would, uh, I'm very happy that you are able to pass that on. Are we all going to get copies of this, or is this just for the chair?
Just you.
Just me? Anybody want to borrow it, you know, I'll have it.
It's all online, do we need...
Well, you know, the thing is, is that when you work for the state in New Hampshire as a lawyer, they give you a set of statutes, and I did, the last two jobs I got, I declined them, because I don't use paper books anymore. I can type in the statute in Google, and it comes up. So I have it at my fingertips, and what's the point of having all those books? I'm saving trees, I should be on conservation. All right, any other business? Any other business, last call?
Just want to welcome the new members, Kirk?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much for your service, that is wonderful.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, yeah, I hope you have fun. If you're not having fun, come see me again.
Didn't everybody introduce themselves when we started the meeting?
That, it was a roll call.
Okay.
That's, that's what it was. Do you want, would you like introductions, David?
Now, I, I'm not asking for introductions, I think I know everybody except Mr. McNeil.
Yeah.
Yep.
And I'll introduce myself to him in two minutes.
Okay, so the introductions are out of the way, staff can go home as soon as we get a motion to adjourn.
We don't need a motion to adjourn, but I move to adjourn anyway.
I declare, therefore, the meeting adjourned. I didn't know you didn't need a motion to adjourn.
No, you don't, you can just adjourn the meeting.
What about the minutes thing, we did it the right way tonight, you know, I just said, are there, any comments before...